Did you fix them?
Congress, come across and call this meeting is ordered as a meeting of the town for Board of Commissioners for our Monday, October 22nd, 2018. And that is our custom will begin with a moment of silence. Thank you. Jay Farrell, would you be able to pledge?
I'm here with Ross for the pledge. I would like to say goodbye to the United States of America. We are a republic of which stands by one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You have your agenda before you. It is an amended agenda to add to the consent agenda. Are there any changes to be made either to the general agenda or to the consent agenda?
Mayor had one of the minutes from October 8th. I had in here regarding the handrails. It was, I may have noted it was going to be done by the time of the street fair, but it was the tree lighting ceremony. We should have one side completed by the tree lighting ceremony. That was not the street fair.
With that one change, is there a motion to a brisk consent agenda?
So moved.
Moved by Jay Farrell, seconded by Michael Bielko. Those who favor please indicate by standing on. Aye. Those opposed. And that comes to all seven. Consent agenda items. Next then would be the opening of public hearing regarding Chatham Park, where there's one west subdivision perimeter buffer. Is there a motion to go into public hearing?
So moved.
By Michael Bielko. Seconded by Pamela Baldwin. Those who favor please indicate by standing on. Aye. Those opposed. Motion carries. And Victoria Bailey will lead us in the discussion of these 40.2 acre tract.
Thank you, Mayor. Chatham Park investors have proposed a subdivision consisting of 180 lots over a 40 acre site. 64 of the lots have been proposed as townhomes. The townhomes are within 500 feet of an exterior boundary of the Chatham Park PDD and will border 1,345 linear feet of adjacent property located outside of Chatham Park. The Chatham Park master plan states that for land uses allowed in Chatham Park that are identified as permitted by special use permit only, in the town zoning ordinance, when proposed within 500 feet of a perimeter boundary shall include perimeter boundary transition treatments with the required site plan application. In these cases, the town's review of the site plan and the perimeter boundary transition treatment shall include a public hearing. The town of Pittsburgh zoning ordinance identifies townhomes as a use which requires a special use permit, and as the proposed site is within 500 feet of an exterior boundary, review of the site plan must include a public hearing. These are some renderings that have been drawn showing a mature and the buffer is being planted. According to the Chatham Park Latin Landscape Element, the northwestern border of this plan requires a 20-foot type A buffer, which consists of four canopy trees and seven under story trees for every 100 linear feet. Staff finds that the proposed perimeter boundary transition treatments meet the requirements of the Chatham Park master plan and landscape element, and the recommendation is to hold a public hearing.
Here is no one signed up to speak at this public hearing. Is there anyone who failed to sign up outside that would still like to speak? Hearing none. Is there a motion to close the public hearing, or are there questions about the Board of Commissioners? Come in. Moved by Beth Wilson Colley. Seconded. Seconded by Michael Bielko. Close the public hearing. Moving to go with this can indicate by standing on. Aye. Those opposed. Motion carries again. The next order of business is... Citizens Matters. Likewise, there is no one signed up for Citizens Matters for this particular Monday meeting. And so next we'll go to Commissioner and Manager update. It is a period of time in which we have some updated discussions and things that have occurred in the community with respect to organizations and committees that we have attended during the last two weeks. And I attended a Jordan Lake One Water Conference in Bram on the 17th of the month and spoke at Rotary on that same day. Likewise, I had a ribbon cutting at Central Carolina Community Family Care, which is a new medical practice in town that's associated with the Sanford Hospital. And did, are there any reports coming forward about the EDC or Main Street climate change or council information?
I can speak to a couple of issues. Main Street program, I think you'll find that we have downtown now some new trash and recycling containers. So Brian, they're not as big as I thought. You may have seen them in a compliance space, not in the wild there. And the EDC attended that meeting and there was a presentation by John Spoon, Small Business Center Coordinator at CCCC. And they've got a really interesting program there for small businesses, and they do several things. And they will give small business seminars, provide one-on-one consultation, all confidential. They will assist with loan applications, and they will provide small business owners orientation to facilities such as the Register of Deeds office and business license offices and planning and zoning issues. So it's a really good asset. It's free of charge, and I want to just let everybody know that that's available.
Okay. Commissioner Bielko and I both attended a meeting of the Chatham Conservation Partnership, and it was a wonderful program of the State of Our Waters in Chatham County. There were a number of speakers, and there were several really interesting things that I'd like to follow up on that. It was a very good meeting. And I also attended the county commissioner meeting with the Affordable Housing Presentation update.
Others?
I have nothing to report on climate change.
Triangle J is scheduled wind bay.
If you're interested in Main Street, that will be helpful. So people are interested in volunteering Main Street, that will be helpful.
And of course, we have the street fair this weekend. Hoping for good weather for that event. Ryan Drusak, we have updates from you.
And we're down.
Thank you very much. The, going at the top of the list and a couple other things to add, the old BioX building at 158 Creo is depicted in a picture that has a Google, Google Streets, Google Red picture showing the building sometime around 2016 or 2017 has been purchased, or is in the process of being purchased by a company called EEG. Talaro. We just met with them this afternoon. It's a place, they assemble medical supply devices. I guess it's a way to go and down yet, hopefully not what it really is. They intend to do some light assembly. It's, so staff met with them today to discuss compatibility use, see if there's any way we can assist them. Fill, refill that building, and so conversation went really well, and hopefully we'll have more good news reported on that very soon. Pittsburgh Elementary School Road Bridge culvert repair, we should have some estimates for that this week. New town hall, we need to schedule a meeting, meeting the board, and Hobbs Architects needs to schedule a time for you guys to meet outside of this meeting to talk about feasibility study and some of the conversations we've had with Chatham County. And so I think that's an important discussion to kind of help us, you know, get to the next phases and steps of that process. So what I'd like to do, we can either tackle this right now, or I can bother you about it later if you want, whatever your mind is.
But session four, does everyone have their calendars with them? Jay Farrell will not be with us, I don't believe, for that particular occasion, if it's within the next short while, but would you be thinking of the 29th, Monday, the 29th? Is that what you, or do you have dates from Hobbs Architects?
No, I thought I'd start with you guys, and then they're really interested, so I'm sure they're a bit more flexible than we are, so we could, I could, I could check on their availability on the 29th, if that works.
It's not an evening.
I think so, okay.
We seem to have lots of nods.
I'd be fine with that.
What were you doing by telling?
Are we thinking six or seven? Yeah, whatever you guys want to do, as long as we can do it.
I really don't know. Probably maybe possibly four weeks.
Jay's getting in here.
I think it's 6:30.
Is that pushing you from wrong? Would you rather have 6:30?
I'll need the supper, so if possible, 6:30 for them.
6:30 seems to be a good time on the 29th.
Thanks, I'll let you know. The, a couple more items. Percy Crutchfield is returning his police chief. I think I've sent out some notices about that. His first day is expected to be on November 26th. He'll be around for the street fair. I'd also like to take this opportunity to make sure that we thank Captain Troy Robertson for his work as interim chief. He's been very helpful, my kind and my team, and so I imagine he's going to continue to be extremely valuable in future roles as well.
I'm sure Ford joins with Brian Drusak to thank you for your professional work.
And then Mayor also mentioned the street fair, so I won't say much about that. The, we pick up schedule, I placed at your desk, and that's been also put on the town website and on the Facebook page. One thing that we're going to do a little bit different that isn't necessarily reflected on that schedule is that because of the hurricane, I believe this is Commissioner Farrell's input, that because of the hurricane, apparently he's received some feedback as well as maybe some of you, that folks are getting ready to start putting leaves and curbs. And so in the Facebook announcement, we are encouraging anyone that has these ready to pick up, to call the, call the town hall with the 1100 number, and we can schedule a time to come out and pick up leaves. So once November 5th, we'd like to continue our schedule as kind of outlined there, but we'll certainly, anybody that has any situation might be, we do as well. We talked about the street fair. The other thing I want to talk a little bit about tonight is, just briefly, is some of the feedback we received at the previous meeting with regard to some of activity that's been happening in downtown at certain times of the day, and partially in response, Captain Robertson came up with some changes to our foot patrol policy to kind of make sure that we're doing as much as possible and then set to have our officers out in the community and in the business community. Troy, if I'm going to put you on the spot, can you take maybe a couple seconds to talk a little bit about it?
Sure. As Mr. Bruce said, this was in response to some events that have occurred recently after school and citizen concerns at the last meeting. So we did revisit our foot patrol policy, and what we're doing now as outlined in the PowerPoint is each officer is now going to be required to conduct three foot patrols per shift. Those will be three during the day and three at night. The key component to this that will, that pertains to what's been happening recently is one of those foot patrols during the day must be conducted in the central business district. That's what we refer to, as you probably commonly know, as like downtown, Main Street, that sort of thing. We call it the central business district. And then on Friday, when we're seeing some of these issues, that foot patrol must be between the hours of 3:00 and 6:00 p.m. So I think that as we have made these shifts and these changes, we'll, we'll start to, hopefully, start to curb, curb some of those issues. And of course, we're always open to, to other ideas if you have some, and feel free to reiterate these changes to people that may be coming up and asking you, you know, what are we doing in response to this as well?
Thanks, Fred. The only couple other, well, just one real big item I think I'd update on is that, I believe at the November 13th meeting, no? Never mind. Well, at the time of this writing, I had been talking to Mr. Jones, and he indicated the Eagles was coming before the next planning board meeting, and so we thought we might have Eagles at the next Board of Commissioners meeting on November 13th, and it sounds like that's not the case. Oh, my goodness. So that was your one.
So now move us into December, did you hear that?
That's all I have for the moment.
Anything for him? We have no new business schedule, but under your old business, we have a budget ordinance discussion for the system development fee. And others, are we, are you more pleased in that discussion?
Yes. So you receive a copy of the new budget, or the proposed changes to budget. They're all highlighted in yellow. A couple of those changes are a few new fees that we added in there since we were doing these other changes for the system development fee. And if you have any questions on that, you can ask Elizabeth. So, and also, I mean, the system development fees, Elizabeth and Jeff and I worked on together. So this proposal to the changes to the budget is a reflection of the system development fee analysis that we had performed by the Woden Company. Using their, the fee that they came up with based on the analysis, we are proposing the system development fee. So that is using a rate of $5.51 per gallon for water and a rate of 6.16 per gallon for wastewater. And in the, I'm just going to page 11 is the page that shows the fee. And so we are proposing that rate for residential based on the meter size, and then for commercial, we're proposing that the rates will be determined based on their allocation permit request for their usage. We didn't want to go based on the meters for those, because those fees can be quite different. Just letting you know if you have any questions.
I don't have a couple of questions. So I noted that we did stop the meter fee calculation at two inch meters.
Yes, because for residential. Yep, I mean, I don't think we've ever had any houses that are over two inches.
Right. So I would ask the question whether we would categorize apartments as residential or commercial?
We'd categorize them as commercial.
So they will fall under the allocation fee? And there isn't a situation where both fees would apply?
No.
Heather, do you have an intuitive sense of how this will change your projections and your work?
Well, so I included projections in the budget for this fiscal year, but that's a very rough estimate. So, so I've included, because it's sold for this. There also is a resolution where we have to adopt a new capital reserve fund, because system development fees are, can only be spent a certain way, so I'm keeping that separate from our current capital reserve fund. And so I, in the budget, I also put in a rough estimate for what we expect to get, you know, get this year in those fees. But that, it all just depends on how many applications we have for those.
And do you think these changes are substantial enough that it warrants revisiting any of the big pieces of work that we've done on financial projections?
No, I don't think at this time. I mean, when we go through the budget process for the next fiscal year, I mean, we may be looking at, but this, I mean, this money is restricted only for maintaining or using for building, you know, new infrastructure. So, but that may help us in our, with our capital improvement plan. So, but I think that for right now, you know, we're going to be starting the budget process not that far from now for the next six years, so for right now, I think we're okay.
So for the Sanford Forest Man, for example?
Right. We, these fees can be used to pay for the loan for the Sanford Forest Man, but at this point, since we haven't even started that project, I mean, we still have time to allocate that, and we would, and when that time happens, we will have to do an amendment to the capital reserve fund for our system development fees to dictate what we're using that money for.
I have a similar question. Condominiums, do they classify residential or commercial or non-residential?
I get the question for Jeff.
I'm just thinking.
Unless it's an office kind of, it could be a non-residential condominium.
Well, okay, residential condominium or living quarters. Because I can imagine some of these larger buildings require a meter larger than two inches.
I think if we find we need more than two inches, the system will tend now to still analyze it, and then we have the remaining that is just what we believe.
I'm just wondering if it makes sense to include it.
We can include it.
Here.
Right. So we can, you can, if you want to, you say, okay, we're going to adopt this if you include up to.
Under size.
Yeah. Under residential, I mean, and that's.
It would make sense to do that, I think.
Yep. Yeah, we can do that.
What, how, and getting this canceled, I'm making sure, but where I think it probably hits the road is whether or not a mixed use building, because we've had a lot of talk about the commercial downstairs first floor, residential above, whether or not those meters would mix. There'd probably be two different meters. Or can we classify it either by their use?
Further questions?
Yes.
Can I ask a question?
You may ask a question.
You're required to request usage by state regulations, like a house, three bedroom house, 360. We've applied to reduce that for the town down below to below 200. So could you put something in here that if the state regulations come down, the fee automatically tracks what the state requires? Question two, if you do a business and the state says it's like 2,000 gallons a day, but you only produce 500 gallons a day, you're using some methods to conserve, is there any way to get credit for that? To promote conservation?
Mr. Goodson, would you like to speak to that?
I think that on the conservation concept, we would have to have some documentation for businesses of similar type. There may be a method that we can use for that. For the residential, I think that it's something made for a typical home, and it was used kind of as an assumption across the board, so I think that one might involve a little bit more consideration when going back to the analysis that we've done, to see what that means if we were to adjust it. We've definitely been so closer, but at this point, that one I don't know, but the details of the calculations, the calculations were, what we've done with that, it's just an assumption for a typical residential, the 360, but it wasn't necessarily a per gallon for that meter size. But we can look into it closer on that one.
State requires 120 gallons per bedroom, so a three bedroom house would be 360, that's what the fee is best based on 360 gallons. So if the state would change it to less than 200, which is what's acceptable today with low flow toilets and everything, I would think the chart needs to reflect what the new gallon usage is.
I think it seems that would require a new analysis, right, that we might have to charge more, what we're trying to do.
Yeah. Maintain our system.
Yeah, I did know that three quarter inch meter was 60 gallons, so, you know, a house with four bedrooms probably still works with a three quarter inch meter, but I'm going to charge for three bedrooms. And a question about our ability to modify flows, I don't know that we're delegated or have that authority to do that. That's managed completely by the state. That's correct. And that's for the non-residential, well, even the residential as well.
But if the state reduced it, would the charts track what the state says?
I would think we would honor that, but have to provide a note of analysis to understand where the revenue is coming from.
Wasn't this brought to the state a while back, something like 98 gallons of bedroom? A while back. Seems like I remember hearing something about this.
I think this is a request in, but I don't know that it's been approved by the board.
No, we have to request in for the state to, it's like 190 gallons per three bedrooms opposed to three, nobody uses 360 gallons in them. And you're penalized here by paying for 360 gallons if you're never going to use, it's more like a business. Like I say, if you go to the state and you have to buy 2,000 gallons, but you're only using 500, it's like Bo James, you know, they needed, the state said you got to apply for 2,000 gallons, they're only using like 500, because they don't have any plates to wash and things, so they're a restaurant, so they get penalized for paying more if they're using less. So I just would like to see some way to get a year or two years' use and come back and get some credit or do another analysis or something.
I think the way forward might be to, let me take a look at what we have here as we possibly consider some of these other amendments, and this is definitely, Mr. Smith definitely makes some good points, but as we've said a couple other times here, that these figures were based on an analysis based on the 360 gallons figure. If we were to modify that, we would have to undertake a separate analysis, and I think if the state were to modify that, that might be an appropriate time to look at it, but right now, this is kind of the information we had analyzed by the Woden Company, and so that's what we're presenting to you here as it is. We wanted to modify it moving forward, there's, that's certainly an ability to, we would have that ability in the future if the state was agreeable to Mr. Smith's idea.
It does seem to me that we want to encourage conservation in a, in a definitive kind of way, so if, as you say, the state requirements are so inaccessible. So if, as you say, the state requirements are so inaccessible to what actually happens on the ground, it seems to me that we would want to take another look at that.
Honestly, we could collect data and put in a request to the state themselves. I know there are several towns, cities in the state of North Carolina have done that, have got special legislation reducing those.
Thank you very much.
Chris Bradley. Tim addressed the residential, I'd like to address the commercial. And on a per-gallon basis, these numbers are going to be about triple what we would pay under the previous for our project at Mosaic. And one of the things that, the challenge of that is that permitted flow, which is the same kind of issue, is much higher, about probably, actual flow is about two-thirds because of the reasons we've talked about, just in general, overestimation, but that permitted flows are based on pretty high averages. And, you know, the reality of it is that capacity affords the utility the right to resell it. So as you grow, so you're not going to have to build a new plant because you can go through and say, our actual flow is X. And so you can sell that capacity, so you're charging us for 100,000 gallons, and we only use 50. That 50 gets resold in the future so you collect more capital for it. So we've been charged twice for capital what we actually use. And so I don't know how this goes into it, but it is a very, it's a pretty significant sort of change from our budgeting. And, you know, I don't understand, you sort of have the proof in the pudding, there's no way to sort of guess. I guess you could say, you know, we'll charge you 75 percent, we'll face a fee on 75 percent of the permitted fee because that's a pretty historical average of what the actual permitted projected gallon is. But, Seth, am I saying that correctly, Mark? Yeah, we're about 140 or 150, and we think our actual flow is going to be like 90 or 100. So Mark's an engineer, calculates that a little more precisely.
I guess the best analogy is, I graduated from NC State in 1988 in civil engineering, and the rates that we use today are the same rates that were used since that time, the early 80s. And as we've all recognized, there's just been a huge amount of efficiency in your dishwashers, your showers, your bathroom fixtures. And I've seen that professionally. When we first started doing flow reductions, we were typically going from like 360 gallons a day down to, say, 250 gallons per day. But the example that Tim referenced, Rye Chapel, which is a new community that's been probably functioning now for about, what, 10, 12 years? And then the flow rates that we see there are, on average, including peak, higher days and lower days, are less than 120 gallons per house. And you know those houses are made up of a lot of families and kids, it's not empty nesters. So that's, those are the real flows, and those are documented flows. So it's definitely to your advantage, I think, from a resource conservation standpoint to try to get lower flows approved for the town, because that will reduce your future capital costs in the future. And then also provides incentives for various businesses that are going to try to capture some of that potable water.
Yeah, I was looking at these numbers, and the way I'm looking at them for the non-residential plus residential component, regardless of how we calculate it, those combined water and sewer fees are $11.67 per gallon. Our previous fees were up over $17 a gallon. So this is a pretty substantial savings, is my analysis of this. Now, that does not account it.
It's not replacing the capital recovery fee.
It is.
It's replacing both.
Yeah. So there's savings of about $5 plus per gallon with this remaining. So it's actually...
Maybe we missed a fee. As I said, in our previous analysis, maybe we missed a fee. Is it, if...
I know Mosaic's got a bunch of residential, and maybe that's driving up some of the cost your analysis is indicating, but from the non-residential side, it's down.
Yeah. Well, that was what, again, maybe we looked at the wrong fee. We were looking at the capital recovery fee and not the access fee, so it may have been where I was doing it, and that was about 600,000. But I will say that the fee that is it made, the principle of, it's going to be based on a much higher flow than what we actually use, which will allow the town to resell it, it doesn't seem equitable that we're, I understand, we have to pay that upfront, but much like the residential reduction, is there a way to figure out how if we are using less and you don't have to build more plant, then, you know, how do we pay for that? What's a fair way to deal with that? That's all I was asking to be considered, that might require another analysis.
Thank you, Chris. Are there any further questions, or is the capital reserve fund resolution ready to be discussed?
I move to approve.
Second. Would you include the expansion of the residential component to include all the previous analysis?
That would be on page 11 to add the...
Meter sizes beyond two inches.
Now, Mayor, I think there are two issues. One is the budget, which has the fees. The other is the resolution, which should be done second. Assuming you have adopted it.
Thank you. Mr. Feser, he pointed out, we would look first at the resolution.
No, I'd look at the budget first and then the resolution, assuming you have adopted it.
Would you mind repeating your suggestion? Yeah, we discovered that there, we don't have meter sizes greater than two inches in this residential component, but the analysis did provide for meter sizes greater than two inches, so that if we were to have a project that required a meter greater than two inches, then we would have to stop the works and adopt some resolution to establish a fee for that. Whereas we've already done the analysis, compared the fee to the rate of fee, so we should include that data, I think, in our budget, so that it's known to the public and there's not a process to go through and maybe get a big surprise if you need a meter order.
So there would just be expanding the chart under H on page 11. It goes up to eight inches.
Yeah.
Yeah, for residential, yeah.
Right. So you have these calculations already?
Yes, yeah, it was part of the analysis.
So Jay Farrell, would you please...
I have one more question regarding Mr. Smith. Do we want to add, if the state changes allotment, the water, just what I'm trying to say, the amount of gallon per bedroom, if the state changes it, do we want to add that here?
I don't think we have the ability to do otherwise.
It would be mandatory.
Okay. Now, we may be able to petition the state to get a reduction based on the pay that we're receiving on our plant to indicate that, you know, it's less than 120 gallons per bedroom.
That's just as I understand it, other than correctly, if I'm wrong, you know, based on statute, our conversation, we've had some good input, but we can't modify our analysis based on their input alone during the course of the meeting. This is what we're dealing with right at the moment.
Exactly.
We can pass this, we get word from the state, and we can modify it, we have to modify it.
But the way the non-residential fee is quoted is just per gallon. That's presumably the gallon use that is going to be permitted by the state. And so what Mr. Smith is talking about is an extension application that's submitted to the state is going to say X number of gallons based upon the use that's intended. If the state allows that use to be calculated in some fashion that's different than the 1988 version of it, then you will go by whatever the state allows. This is a prospective reduction in the usage capacity. What Kirk was talking about is retrospective, that's a completely different issue. But the way the fee is charged is based upon the gallons that the state will permit, based upon whatever criteria the state is going to allow. So if it's 120 gallons per bedroom, fine. If it's 90 gallons per bedroom, that's going to be fine, too. This fee will work both ways.
It will work, that's right.
I'd like to motion to approve the revised budget ordinance.
Second to that with the expanded residential list of meters and their associated fees.
Motion made by Jay Farrell, with seconded by, and so are you amenable to the...
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
... by Michael Fioco. Those who have a please indicate, I say aye.
Aye.
As opposed, motion carries unanimously. And then, do we need the capital improvement, capital reserve fund resolution?
Yes, so this is the resolution to establish a capital reserve fund solely for system development fees, which only can be spent in, that is laid out in the statute for system development.
Move by Michael Fioco.
Second.
Taken by that one from Foley. Those in favor, please indicate, I say aye.
Aye.
Next, the next item under old business is hotel incentives. And we will be led by Brian Brugge and others with respect to this for a week.
Thank you, I appreciate that. The last meeting, we discussed, we discussed the hotel incentives issue, both in terms of the incentive schedule and the hotel operator commitments. You have a memo in your packet that discusses the incentive schedule, and I believe that's the one that was discussed by the board late last year and then also last week. And that's example four, and that's, again, I have the memo on the bottom screen. We have also the hotel commitments that were also based on input from Commissioner Fioco late last year, discussed by the board last week, and also discussed with Mr. Bradley from PECO. I think those are the, again, those are commitments that we, I think, had a tentative understanding based on that agreement last week. So with that, I would open it up for any additional discussion you might have on it or any comments that maybe Mr. Bradley has as well.
I just, we took the list from Mr. Fioco's memo, and there was some things where he referred back to our list, and so we put it into one consolidated list. That's what this represents. And Mr. Brugge is going to give you the percentages, but we're here aligned on this.
Under further questions? Are you satisfied with what you have heard about?
Commissioner Fioco and Mr. Bradley, we open to a slight two-word, line, item seven. Yeah, item seven, our item seven, oh, last sentence of that bullet point, hotel operator will provide third-party certification, verification of such energy-saving performance instead of construction. Verification to replace certification and performance to replace the word construction. So the new language agreed, the hotel operator will provide third-party verification of such energy-saving performance to Chad EDC upon completion of his...
Do you want to make that motion?
Oh, yes. I move that we, I move that we approve this incentive with that two-word heading.
Is there a second to John Bonnet's motion?
Second.
Seconded by Beth Wilson Foley. Those in favor, please indicate, I say aye.
Aye, aye.
As opposed, thank you.
More time coming. Thank you for your patience.
The next slide, third section of old business, that will be the master plan, text amendment, additional elements of public facilities.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the board. Tonight, we have the latest draft of the facility development in front of me. You received a clean copy of the deadline copy from Chad Park. You also received a memo provided by Chad Park that outlined those changes that were made since the last draft. If we recall, we had a workshop in early October to discuss public facilities and mainly the parks and recs portion of public facilities. I think that meeting went pretty well, and some of the changes that were made at that, were suggested at that meeting, were reflective in your previous draft. The staff took the opportunity to take a holistic look at the element, and we had a couple of comments that we have not made through the process on water supply and sanitary sewer. Those comments generally revolve around rewording the reimbursement provisions in the element to make sure that the town is reimbursing for oversizing of lines that need to be for properties outside Chad Park. And then discussion of the water mall, that would be used for future planning, and how that should be incorporated with the town's water mall. For the most part, the most changes were to the parks and recs section, and staff had some observations that we included in your, in the memo to you, and some of those were changes that Chad Park is proposing that would help clarify as to where, what is an improvement and how funds would be spent for those improvements on park-ready parks, the seven neighborhood parks, and the two regional parks or community parks. So I included some staff suggestions on that as to maybe parsing out some of the language to improvements, such as park sign, building sign, landscape cleaning, and the installation of water and sewer lines and associated facilities on the site. Those are all things that should either be accomplished by the town or in collaboration with a developer. And the installation of water and sewer line, that's just a normal business of developing, and if this park is adjacent to a public right-of-way, as suggested in the element, water and sewer should be readily available.
There are plenty of questions on that, because there are, I think the element does talk about the requirement that the park will have access to the public roadway.
Yes.
Sidewalk.
Yeah. Yeah.
And water sewer lines stubbed to the property. So they are out of the road, they are as a property.
Right.
Can be picked up and sent into the park.
That's how I understand it, yeah.
Okay. But if there is an installation of water sewer on the property, that is an improvement to the property.
I could, yes, I could see that being an improvement.
Right.
Yes.
I think that would be an expenditure in my way. I think it qualifies.
Right. So if we do not include the "to the roadway line" as part of the, but beyond the roadway line and "to the park site," that's an improvement, just as it would be, you know, any other, as I've laid out here, other type of improvements to build the park or make it park-ready. So, yes, that's a, that's an idea I did not think about.
So honestly, thinking about it, there's always the phrase improvements "to the property." A lot of people would think is "on the property," but it's not.
It's to the property.
Versus improvements "on the property."
Sure.
So we could change that word here. After improvements to "on" public park site.
Right. All right. Sure.
And I think distinguish between the two.
That will be, that could be a good change. So continuing on, there was some talk, I think the theme throughout the last several revisions to the element, we went from a, an idea of matching funds between Chad Park and the town for the community parks, and that's softened a little bit. I think we should take out most, if not all, the language that says the town has to do X. We as a town are going to have to develop parks, we're going to have to fund them. I'm not so sure that an element that's supposed to be ordinance should be mandating the town to do any of that. I get the collaboration nature angle that we're trying to get here, but the town and Chad Park are hard to collaborate together, hopefully, and we will continue to do so. And we would not ever, hopefully, this town will never get to a situation where we're in conflict between what we think should happen between the park site and what the town would do. So I would try to remove most of that language that says the town would have to expend any monies towards parks and Chad Park. The idea of mini-parks, I know that's been explored a little bit, and I think my belief, and maybe Chad Park can expand a little bit on this when they have an opportunity, is their idea of the mini-parks is to fund them. That's part of a $2 million effort that they've laid out, and to program them, maintain them, but that land would be turned over to the town, and the town would be in ownership of that property, but we really wouldn't be maintaining the property. And so I feel it's a little, that's a little wonky, where we might have some liability there, but we don't really control the park's destiny, you know, person. But that could be, there could be clarifying discussion tonight as to really what Chad Park's thinking there. On D, Chad Park added some qualifiers to this draft because staff is a little concerned as to the idea that Chad Park was going to do certain things, parks and these mini-parks and greenways, and there was really no qualifier as to when those things have to happen. So this attempt by Chad Park to add in at a certain CO time, they would have to perform or expend funds to a certain park, I think is on the right track. I'm just not sure that some of the numbers here are realistic. Some of the language here talks about every 3,000 COs, then we would have a new park site out of those seven neighborhood parks to calculation. So at the 21,000 COs is when that seventh park would come online, or the funds would be expended. We might not get to 21,000 COs in Chad Park. I think some of the things we've seen from their future presentation, we might not get there. I know their, the master plan gives them the ability to get to 22,000, but that might be generation two or three of Chad Park sometime well into the future. So you all might want to work Chad Park to lessen that number down a little bit to a little risk, realistic number. Say with greenway, we would calculate it to get you up to 21,000 as well. And so those are, there's one thing that I meant to mention in this memo that I forgot. At the workshop, we talked about trying to get the nomenclature throughout their charts speaks to mini-parks and community parks and neighborhood parks. We'd like to get away from large and small parks, to really call it what it is, per chart. So I think we all agree at the workshop that would be something that we could all see. And I can answer any questions. I know there was a lot of, a lot of changes in this draft at Chad Park's here. I know there's been some things shared back and forth since the workshop that we had in October, earlier part of this month. I can try to orchestrate this.
Questions or the beginnings of working through some of these questions that Jeff has presented to us?
I've got one thing that I did not pick up on. I'm trying to read it real quickly about the mini-parks. You know, I think we were in agreement that they're kind of important components to a system. You know, it's even, I mean, they are being combined with the concept of a pocket park, and I think most recently, there's been a lot of attention given to page one, and pocket parks, who are people really enjoying it, who are finding it valuable. But I didn't pick up in the element, the idea that the parks would be privately maintained.
Okay. That may have come through, not through what I've seen written here, but through conversation with Chad Park itself. But again, if that's a clarification that can happen, then we need to, you all can ask that question and get that clarification.
Because I think your objection was ownership without the ability to control.
Right.
Which is gratefully concerning. But if we are maintaining, then we've got control.
Yeah, right.
And probably can be more accountable for our own liability.
Right.
Right? Okay. Because I think they're incredibly big.
Yeah.
And the idea of collaborating with Chad Park to design these, you know, I can see a format where a site plan or subdivision plan is submitted, and there's a concept, there's an idea expressed where the town is to work with Chad Park to modify or change.
And we've seen that in the current north subdivision that was approved earlier in the year, they had a rock outcropping and some other small pocket park areas, but it's sprinkled throughout the subdivision. I think we just want to be clear as to what that is and who owns it and who maintains it. And if you all find that that's, however, the terms of the agreement is good, then be clear in the element, and that could qualify as park lands. Yep.
Well, Michael, I don't want to interrupt your flow. You've got a list of things to cover.
I do, but again, I may just come back to.
Just say on the note of these mini-parks, the pocket parks, I agree, they're clearly going to present a great value to neighborhoods that are near them and to Chad Park as they work to market their properties. But I'm mindful of staff's caution that they're not necessarily assets that the town should want to own or maintain. So I'm not sure how to reconcile that with what you're advocating for. But I think it's just one example of a longer list of things that I think I'm very much needing to see a financial analysis of this element language as it stands versus the opportunities or burdens the town would have in the future to finance things in other ways, be it an impact fee or bonds or just using the regular tax base. So that's a point I'm going to keep revisiting, is that I think we need a financial analysis. And as I said in our workshop, I have no interest in delaying this amendment, excuse me, this additional element. I asked Mr. Horn at his earliest convenience to explore having this analysis done, and were you able to find anything? If I may, I don't want to push you off the spot. I did, I'll pause here.
Sure. We've made inquiries to two firms, and they're working on proposals just to say we understand this, if they're asking for it, we can assist you in some way. But those are not, those are not important.
Okay. Thank you for reaching out.
Sure.
I wasn't familiar with that request. Oh, I'm sorry, that was in the workshop.
Yeah, I think, John, what might be good is when we get to that point, you might want to, we talked about this earlier, they called for a vote to make sure the staff is aware that, you know, there's been a vote that wants us to hire.
Sure, of course.
To make that, to make that good. It may have been just something that we missed. We certainly did hear you, and we did look at that right away. It's just, you know, everyone's a little bit busy.
Sure, absolutely.
And it takes a little time to get that analysis completed. But outside of that, whatever the board wishes for us to do, we would certainly execute that wish.
I'd be interested in seeing that.
Well, I'm curious of the scope and subject of the analysis. The master plan for Chad Park talks about the dedication of land to a certain amount for loans, which the town presumably will receive and then have the ability to develop or not develop. The financial analysis will discuss the development of this land and the maintenance of the facilities in that land?
I think that scope is, the discussion I would defer to staff. I think my great concern is that this has financial implications for future and for the taxpayers' current and future of the town. And there are offers on the table of certain investments from Chad Park investors. And there's also language in this that would prevent us from using certain mechanisms to raise revenue for development or maintenance of parks in future. And the implications of that are not there to me.
Well, I believe the language limits the source of revenue, but not the ability to generate revenue. It doesn't keep us from floating funds for those.
Some of those impact fees.
Exactly. In exchange for the improvements. And so, you had asked, I was going all about what the values were, and you had asked me to put it in writing.
No.
That is obviously not an analysis of.
Right.
Maintenance costs, but it is a statement about the differential between the value that the additional element provides to the town versus the impact fee.
Well, and there's some things in there that I'm not sure exactly that they line up with my expectations and what are appropriate things to value in this equation, so.
You specifically have objections to?
Yeah. We have a lot of questions in front of us about the acreage. 667 acres is what it boils down to, the formula. And what can contribute to that? What can apply to the 667 acres? I believe that staff have pointed out that sidewalks, on-street bike lanes, and multi-use paths should not go towards that. And in your analysis, I believe you've included those.
I've included those as a separate line item, and you'll see the three headings. It's qualified, qualifying parkland, which includes the 667 acres. That's the only part of that analysis that is part of the additional element, part of the master plan. The non-qualifying is all of the private development that will not count towards the 667 acres, such as the apartment complexes that will remain private, not necessarily open to public. Of course, it will serve those residents which we know are the public. And then, the third category is the public realm, where I listed the sidewalks, the multi-use paths, and I forget the item. But so, the very top item you can see is what, about $143 million. I think the next one's $145, and then the next. So I tried to give you the analysis in such a way that you could break it down between what is the guarantee, master plan, and additional element, and requirement of Chad Park versus what would be voluntarily done just out of the market development of the product, such as apartment complexes. We see that in Palace right now. They're coming in with, you know, a lot of recreational facilities that they will advertise to their tenants. And then those, and then I broke out the public realm items, so that you can see they are separate. There is no demand on the master plan of saying, you're going to do the roads, the streets, but it is not to be included in the recreation element. So it is not a value going towards the recreation equation. Those are facilities that we've recognized through the master planning concept of this idea of the public realm, where we recognize that bike lanes and sidewalks are incredibly valuable and healthy for.
Transportation.
And, yeah, transportation as it relates also to recreation.
Correct.
So, yeah, I'm glad you brought us to the top of your analysis. And this, I'm not sure that the public has access to this, so you shared it with us, but I don't believe that it's on our website. Is Commissioner Fiocco's October 9th?
I don't think it is, no.
I did share it with all the board.
It's a public document.
Yeah.
We published that.
I think I included Mr. Bruce Beck.
Yeah.
Mr. Jones, Dan. Oh, I think I included Mr. Horn also.
So you included the value of our hundred acreage to be provided, and as I've said before, I don't think that that goes into this calculation, because my understanding is that up to the 667 acres, the finances don't come into consideration. After that, we can absolutely look at the value of that land. But all developers are required to provide park facilities or pay fee in lieu, and other developers are not exempt from future recreation impact fees, parks and recs impact fees. So if they're having to provide that, that's not a fairness to other developers. And. And I just, I feel very, very strongly that that money, that should not be counted.
Well, that land value is included because it was, this is a comparison between the value provided via the master plan versus the value provided via the impact fee. And the formula for the impact fee clearly states that includes land value. Therefore, compare apples to apples, I think you have to include the land value in the master plan.
Implicit in that, I believe, is the idea that if we were to use the impact fee, that Chatham Park is obliged to give the six hundred and sixty-seven acres, and that's not the base. The master plan requires that they give the six hundred and sixty-seven acres. Then we can talk about the impact fee, or the bonds, or whatever other means for financing parks and rec.
The impact fee includes a land value component.
Sure.
Therefore.
Separate and completely detached from the question of the six hundred and sixty-seven acres?
Six hundred and sixty-seven acres is the land amount for this development. There is another land amount for a different development.
And we're talking about excluding the, which impact fee from this development? I think that's probably not a wise choice. And I would just like us to have an analysis so that we can understand what are the implications? What are the taxpayers in future on the hook for? What are the current taxpayers on the hook for?
And the hook being parks development and parks maintenance?
Perhaps.
How would we go about defining this analysis so that we can advertise to those who might perform?
I would lean on staff to define that. Paul would be the one I would have to rely on. He's already engaged a few firms that he has some ideas of what we talked about in the workshop. But I think it is, I think we do need clarification on what the analysis would be looking at. And we can get to that point, I guess, at some point in time, but.
I think you would have to agree that you would have to determine exactly what you want to look at, because just to say you want to see how much it costs to develop a park, but how, if you, a lot, there can be a lot of different variables. It depends on what do you mean when you say develop the park? Are you talking about extensive ball fields? Are you talking about playground equipment? So you have to do a specific reference to what do you mean about park development? Because that really, and you, I don't see how you could just ask them just to say, okay, what is the value without specifically saying, this is what we want you to look at, how much it would cost to develop this type of park, or this type of park. And as far as I'm concerned, land should always, the value of land should always be, because land is always expensive. And it's always, the value of land is always included in just about everything, if you're discussing real estate or whatever. But the value of land is always important to me. So I think if you're going to talk about development, you have to specifically talk about, advise them what you want specifically in that, because it would not be a good analysis just to say, okay, we're going to look at this type of park in comparison to what.
I think about how Ballmore did specify, like, which certain things would be required of each park. Land does give you foundations, we're putting out the cost.
Like the park ready for?
At least the things all the parks will have these certain features.
Yes, prototype. Prototype, park ready.
Well, I think that park ready concept comes from this additional element. The prototypical park, which we did discuss, I mean, honestly, has a lot of issues with it, whether or not it includes all twenty-five items, or that's a list from which you pick, because we don't want homogeneous parks. You know, we want them to be. And so to say that they're all going to have these items, I don't think we could, obviously, we got a workshop.
Yeah. So, and then we had a specific workshop on the master plan following the meeting. And there were a number of decision points that we probably are still outstanding as to, what do we call them, a park, and what needs to be in all the parks. That's part of what the analysis would have to know, is what you all want to see in individual parks. We may not know that tonight, because this workshop just to kind of get started on it, but there was a number of things left outstanding from a decision-making point. The way I understand it, Paul and I talked about it, is that I think the parks and rep master plan can move forward because it's visionary in nature. But when we start making regulations, such as in the U D O or what have you, we would have to start making decisions about what we want to see qualified in the park, what do we allow for floodways and tollplains to count as parks, is this a fraction of the ratio thereof? Those decision points have not been made. They don't necessarily have to be made with a vision document, the parks master plan. But for an analysis, if we went down that road, we probably want to hone in a little bit as to what, as the town, for the future, would want to see as parks.
And that's the master plan.
Somewhat. I think outside of us having additional workshops and kind of working through these decision points, we're going to have those as implementation items to move forward on ordinances and U D O. That the concept of parks and the nature of how we develop parks in and around the town, and what we need, that's in the vision document. But I think at that meeting, we talked about sort of removing some of the ordinance language from the vision document. But that's really how we would go about, how I believe a firm would go about doing an analysis would be to know some of those decision points. And we could be at a point that we hired a firm, and that part of their work is to sit down with you all to go over parks and try to get you honed in on what each individual park, or what the system needs moving forward.
Well, it certainly seems like parks in the recreation master plan should provide the vision guidance as to what the town wants to see as parks.
Yeah, I think that's the prototype.
Well, I think it's far more than just a prototypical park.
Yes.
As I understand it, prototypical park is part of any of the park.
I think generally, yeah, yeah, generally that's.
Let's talk about individual parks than the prototype.
Yeah, I think this, this.
Talk about proximity, you know, everyone's walking distance to a park, those kinds of big ideas.
Right, right.
And so, to come in and say, well, a park costs this much compared against something, I think that's the analysis that's starting to germinate here. I'm not sure that, John, honestly, you've got questions, you're seeking answers, but unless you can really define the question you want somebody to answer, I'm not sure we're going to get the answer. So, I'm just not understand what you mean by the analysis, and let staff define. I think they're looking to you as well, to provide them guidance, to help provide the information you seek.
So, seems pretty clear to me that in the master plan and the P D D, P D D ordinance, that there is an obligation to provide land. And I don't believe the value of that land is remissly correct, and if I'm wrong, is part of that. I believe it's strictly about acreage, acreage of parks. Is that correct?
Sure, as far as the master plan is concerned, there's an acreage figure, but I don't know what, I don't understand what you're trying to connect or not connect.
I'm trying to disconnect the idea that that value should come into play in this calculation because those six hundred and sixty-seven acres are to be delivered as parks, regardless of the conversation about other financing mechanisms.
I don't understand, calculation of what? What are you trying to calculate?
calculation, Mr. Fiocco and Commissioner Fiocco has calculated the value of the land.
Okay. I have provided that based on public information provided to this board. I've cited the sources of that.
And that's fine, whatever your sources are, it just, those are your calculations. They don't come into bear with the six hundred and sixty-seven acres.
They do in terms of you appreciating the value of the six hundred and sixty-seven acres. If you don't appreciate that figure, then I guess it doesn't make any difference. But I don't understand the correlation. Value is important under the element in terms of a fee in lieu of, you've got to use value to be able to calculate that, always has been, and it is in this element. So, I mean, I'm not sure where you're trying to go with your question.
Well, I think, I think that what's being suggested implicit in these calculations from Commissioner Fiocco is that if we eliminated the language from this additional element, excuse me now, if it happened that we, town, was obliged to use an impact fee to purchase the six hundred and sixty-seven acres, that that would be the value somehow, or that we would have to pay to purchase the six hundred and sixty-seven acres. I believe that the master plan says that we don't have to purchase the six hundred and sixty-seven acres.
Well, you don't have any impact fees either, so, I mean, I don't, you're making apples and oranges. There are no recreation impact fees.
But the language says we're giving up the impact fee.
That's another part of the element, yes, it's in there.
I think we can eliminate that.
Why? Well, I mean, that's, that's an issue for you all to decide.
I think that we want to keep all of our options for financing amenities in the town.
I'm not sure that's what, first of all, there is no impact fee for recreation in Pittsburgh. And you all are talking about.
Right now. But we're relatively unique in the state in having that option?
It's on the books, yes, sir.
Yes.
It may not always be on the books, but it's on the books now.
Mm-hmm.
And you have not done the analysis that's necessary to be able to charge a recreation impact fee.
Understood. And I think we have done the analysis that's necessary to accept the idea of these contributions that are in the additional element.
You either, I mean, this is all up to you all in Chatham Park, as far as what, they are obligated under the master plan, and that you all accepted and approved to dedicate that number of acres of land. So I don't, I'm not, and they're proposing this element that there be no impact fees if you ever get around to doing that, because they're giving you six hundred and sixty-seven acres of land, plus all the other ancillary recreation-type facilities. And you either appreciate that, or you don't. So, I mean, I'm not sure what the issue is. If it is, an issue is that you don't want to preclude the possibility of an impact fee, then just let it boil down to that issue.
Well, that is it. And also, I'm concerned about many of the details of the finances that have been proposed and discussed, and it's just not clear to me.
Well, I'm not sure what finances are being proposed and discussed.
Contributions from Chatham Park to town, and obligations from the town, for the town.
Well, it would certainly make things move forward easier if there was an issue about impact fee that you don't like the way this has been excluded in the draft before you. Why don't you do a straw poll among yourselves and figure out whether there's support for that position or not? If there's not, then we belong to something else.
Sure.
You all need to move somewhere, which way, one way or the other.
Yes.
It seems to me. Or else appoint a committee and deal with it some other way. Because I think that you all are spinning your wheels a lot.
So, as a board of one approach, the concept of getting additional analysis, fiscal analysis of the gift once made, the maintenance, and the continuing obligation on part of the town. From what I understand, that you're, that's the basis of your concern, of what obligation the town is going to have at that point with maintenance and facilities creation.
To maintain a swimming pool costs a lot more than to maintain a merry-go-round. And unless you know whether there's a merry-go-round or a swimming pool, I don't see how anybody can give you an estimate of the cost of maintenance for ever and ever. I mean, if the maintenance is too high, then you don't build anything. You don't accept it. So, I mean, I don't see how you can get a number from any consultant unless they know what it is they're evaluating. And you haven't gotten to that point.
It's like, would you interest the board to make sure that they're agree to be able to pay for these parks? Is there, I mean, I know we can't pinpoint it exactly, any more than you can say, oh, this is exactly how much it's going to cost to raise a child, but you're just trying to get a sense, it sounds like to me, that we're going to be able to pay for these parks.
If you can't pay for them, you wouldn't accept it. That's the solution to that problem, where you have a vacant lot.
Well, I think under the master plan, we have demanded that we accept the acres, just like our subdivision ordinance tells us to accept the acres, because that's what.
You have a choice in the subdivision.
Well, and I think we have a choice in the elements, there will be payment as well.
Right.
That's it here. So, it's.
It's one thing, but you have the money to build the parks, but I think as far as long-term maintenance.
But I think that's the analysis that is done every time you contemplate building a park, and that is what the town, that's normal town business to do that. We're talking about improvements. The Chatham Park is offering as part of the additional element, just like the offer of land to the schools and to the fire department, and the reservation of sewer and purview service, and all these things. The offer is to, one, we've already qualified the six hundred and sixty-seven acres, or let's say it this way, one-twenty-fifth of an acre for a welling unit, which is an accelerated rate, but that's in the weeds. And then the offer of making improvements to the parks, or to the land, that the town will not have to spend in order to make those improvements. And I would say that that would be beneficial to the town to accept that condition, and it is far in excess of the calculated impact fee that was done based on analyzing the value of our parks today, which included, wait a minute, divided by the population, and it came up with a certain figure. And that figure is far less than what this additional element commits Chatham Park to So I think this is a better deal. And in exchange for that deal, they would like to know that they aren't going to be hit with additional costs. There's nothing to say that the town can't float bond and raise money the way it does to build parks.
So then the rest of the town, Pittsburgh, would have to pay as well, but not anybody that is.
Well, no, anyone who's interested in purchasing the bond. Yes, we could raise taxes and say, you know, we're raising taxes because we want to build more parks.
I guess, here's the theoretical possibility. Okay, you assembled this thing on Saturday.
Yeah.
The Triangle Land Conservancy is working with the city of Providence. I can't remember if it's a bond or what, but it's worth actually about five dollars per person in the city of Providence. And all the money that they raise goes towards improving water quality, and sometimes several streams, increasing buffers. Say the town of Pittsburgh wanted to do something like that. Say the town of Pittsburgh wanted to do something like that, would that be allowed in Portland?
The town, if, the town wanted to, well, a bond?
Which, it worked with the Tri, the Triangle Land Service, the county in, in working with the county of Raleigh, to help them come up with a plan, to help protect, to take bigger steps to protect water quality. And so, all the money that they raised in this way is put toward improving water quality, increasing streams, other...
So, they're purchasing land with it?
I'm, I'm not really sure. I'd like to contact them and find out more about it.
Does that, remember, and...
Purchasing the development rights?
In some way.
Purchasing the development rights?
Maybe that would come under, something like that would come under...
Well, that could be a conservation use, right. But I think the Triangle Land Service fee is all about buying land, and I'm pretty sure they recognize the value of it. Didn't that...
I think that is what they're doing, they were, but people, basically, everyone in Raleigh is paying $5 a year, and then they are purchasing that in the, the extra protection to make for streams.
So, the city had decided to impose that fee upon its citizens, and I guess give the money to TLC to put this land in that kind of thing?
But if you call it, it's not like, like they usually do with the whole park.
You can create a reserve account, just like you did for the cap, the system development fee. You, you have cap and reserve accounts already, you can have another. You can have a reserve account for rural housing, for conservation, you can do it for instance.
Okay, but my point is, I'm just, the question I have is, if the town wanted to do something like that or something else like that, it could be for something totally different. Does this, does this mean that Chatham Park would not...
I don't think so. I, no, I don't think this would exclude the town from collecting fees from its citizens' account. But bonds are used for capital, for projects, and bonds, I don't believe, could be used for ongoing maintenance costs, operational costs. And impact fees can, and are used for that. So, you know, it's just, I, I don't like us willingly giving up tools from our toolkit when the future is so uncertain. And when we have done the analysis of, there, there are, there are metrics, there's industry metrics that can be used to Mr. Messick's, uh, uh, swimming pool versus carousel or merry-go-round. There are maintenance costs per unit of population. We've heard about some of these metrics in our workshop and, and master plan presentations from Mr. Horn. The estimates could be made. I think we could get greater clarity. I think that we could encourage and strengthen and empower our staff to get some of this straightened out where there's things in, in calculations that maybe don't belong in calculations. And I don't, I don't see it as a subjective thing when I say for the master plan's commitment of 667 acres, the dollar value of that land shouldn't be considered. I, I, I think that's an objective fact.
I don't agree with that. I don't think that's an objective fact.
I think that we, as individuals, consider the value of the land, but until, until Chatham Park says, no, you're going to have to buy those 667 acres, it's, it's not a consideration.
If value of land is always a consideration regardless of whether you have to purchase the land or not. If I had 10, 10 acres over on the other side of town, and I'm going to give it to the town, and I said, well, what do you think the value is? You're going to say, okay, it's appraised at such and such amount. Land always has a value, regardless of whether they're going to get it to you or whether we're going to purchase it. It's always a value of land. So, I think if you're going to, if you're going to look at, or try to assess what this is, or how much this is going to be, and look at a feasibility analysis or financial analysis, whichever you would like to call it, you still have, in my opinion, you still have to look at the value of your land, because land is always valuable, always valuable. So, you have to put that into computation.
And I think the value of the land was recognized and considered at the master plan approval.
And if, when we're talking about this 667 acres, okay, if you find, look at this analysis and then say, okay, we can't afford to build a park there, and we're going to give the land back to Chatham Park and say, uh, we don't want this, we're not going to do that, because we were, when we were going through the master plan, we wanted a lot of parks, we wanted parks. So, it would be ludicrous to tell them, okay, we'll want the park land now, you take it back. That, that, even if we can't build anything on, have some trees on it for sure, we can always walk through the park. So, regardless, we would still take the land, because it's always going to be valuable.
Mm-hmm. First of the thoughts?
I think, I think my challenge here is that I'm not a finance expert, but I think that people who have experience in looking at municipal finance or local government finance across many different jurisdictions and understanding standard practices or norms, that they can help clarify what seems to be an intractable discussion to dispute here. Commissioner Ballmer, so, I'm optimistic that we can work this out, but we are already waiting deep in the weeds for, for my comfort. I, I have read Mr. Jones and Mr. Horn's memos. I'm concerned that they have a punch list of items that we're still need to be ironed out in discussions at Chatham Park. I believe that those things should be worked out, and, and I want all of these things to pursue as this rapidly as we can. So, I'm not sure what to say or where to turn.
Well, definitely, there are things on, listed on here that we need to reconcile with Chatham Park, that's for sure. But, you know, in terms of value, not value, I will always be at that.
So, what is the path forward here, Ben?
I think there's a lot of things on this, but I think there's these to look at before we move on.
Yes, yes. One of the things that I struggled with was the delivery of these park ready expenditures on the seven parks, which are what in the, what's called Park Service area. And they had proposed three, every 3,000 dwelling units would require the expenditure of $500,000 on the area. And, you know, it did seem like a lot of units for, that would happen, I mean, 3,000 dwelling units, I forgot how many acres that would include of dedicated park land. And so, I was looking for another metric of how to decide when the park expenditure would occur. And I, in my mind, I had separated the seven districts and thought, I, some calculations based on population projections per dwelling unit that was provided by Chatham Park, trying to hit a level of service that we've talked about in the parks in the original master plan, came up with a number of 500 dwelling units. And I thought, the first five way that the park expenditure would occur, once 500 dwelling units received a CO within each of those districts. And it brought to my attention that, well, you can really play with those numbers a lot and maybe ever get your seven parks, right? You could do a lot more in one section and not so many in this section, too. So, I don't know, I haven't been creative enough yet, come up with a solution that says every 500, but to exceed a cumulative total when they're delivered. But I know there's a reasonable solution in there, and 3,000 just seemed real too large, or, so, I don't have that answer this evening, I'm thinking about it. I know, you and I had exchanged an email today, so, thinking about it, so, 500 seemed attractive, but I think it is just an interesting flaw in that thinking, so, if you'll think about that as well. I do have some technical things that I've mentioned before, that, that did not make it into these changes, and I can go through those tonight. And that's...
Do you see this red line?
Yeah.
Page change.
I'm looking at the October 12, we're in, the markup, we're in, page 13. We're talking about the calculation of sewer to reserve for schools. And item number two says the number of students generated by the approved development plan for school. It says the number of gallons per day per student equals the number of gallons of sewer to reserve. And I want to add, between the words approved and development, small area plan and development plan. The reason I want to do that is that the small area plan, what we've got to be, think of the big picture about how much sewer is going to be required in a small area plan for schools, fire, police, all that. And we can know that. And that we should also base it on the development plan, because it is highly likely that the development plan will be different than the estimate for a small area plan. So, as we go through the process, we should recognize the need to claim and estimate. And also, on the second line there, between gallons and of, say gallons per day, sewer. I would like, page 22, qualifying park land, there are six bullets. I would like to include, I think 1, 3, and 6. Yeah, 1, 3, and 6 include the phrase approved by the town. I would like that phrase included in 2, 4, and 5. And I know that it might require some change in syntax, but I wonder if we can get that in.
You said for 1, 3, and...
2, 4, and 5.
Oh, you said for what, initial...
1, 3, and 6 do have it.
Oh, yeah, okay.
Yeah. The next one has to do with, on page 23, usability of the land. And during our conversation at the workshop, we wrestled with this idea of the 50% and the 75%. And I know that the, the work session felt that 100% of the land should not be in dwellings, but I think that's, that's short-sighted. I think there will be parcels of land that would be perfect for parks that would have portions of that land as a wetland. And to completely eliminate those parcels on a small amount of wetland, I'm not saying that we would disturb it, I'm saying, but it should count in the larger body of property.
My understanding during the discussion was that you could make that a park, you just didn't count, although in the middle of the rest of the park, it didn't mean that you have to perimeter, you count as park. You just didn't have to use a park space in this, in five of those.
But it would be...
You can't dish on, you can't deny.
But it would be within the park.
It would be...
Anyone looking at it would recognize it as part of the park.
Right, then that's, that could be something like that, right?
Right. My only suggestion was to change it from 100% to 95%, so that some could be improved.
You didn't have to, right, to have a boardwalk on it.
Yeah.
Does that last?
Yes. Under certain, certain, certain permits, protocols. So, I'd like to exclude it completely, broadly, up, the best way to work.
So, Michael, that, that at least 50%, you're changing that to at least 95%?
No, the 75%.
Oh, the 75%.
Or the 95%, and I don't know what the number is for the 50%.
Okay.
Now, I don't know that, honestly, I...
Your thing is, you just want to be happy, take, um, the possibility of having some of the wetland incorporated, not just the...
Right, some tiny bit.
There's the bridge.
Yeah.
That makes sense, that's agreeable.
I feel like you might, right?
Right.
My bridge going across the, the wetland, and you can take this stuff and burn it.
Because don't, don't forget that greenways, greenways may want to do it.
Might need to do it.
They might need to, and honestly, they want that, because...
I think they were thinking about that, yeah.
There are, yeah. It's been, I know we've gone back and forth, on page 24, access, they originally said access, now it says pedestrian access, and it talks about 10 feet versus 20 feet, which we honestly struggle to all together. We will be looking at that through small area plans, we will be looking at that through development plans, and we can, if we decide, well, with Chatham Park, whether or not we provide these connections or that, to try, because each individual case will be unique, and it will have, I think we will be best served by making the, the combination at that time.
That's something that you forget, but it seems like that should be a requirement, that you have to have some kind of connection.
Well, we, we do say that greenways will connect to public right of way as well, so we'll put those connections.
Your thought on that one, Chuck?
I can see where we can get more details as to that pedestrian connection at a smaller scale, smaller scale, being a development plan or subdivision plan.
But the connection, you think, will not get lost?
I don't think so. I mean, we want connections to parks, we want to make sure that they're accessible.
Will it be written down somewhere?
Um, I don't know.
And then we can have it be the thinker, but just leave out...
Well, we have said that the park land will be going in public right of way.
Yeah.
With the sidewalk.
Right.
So, it'll be, it'll be...
It'll be accessible down there.
...in each situation where you've got a greenway running behind a bunch of homes, and you want to punch an access point between sidewalk and street, right, with that greenway, and how wide is that separation going to be between the lots? I think that would be decided on a case-by-case basis.
Do you want to have some kind of...
I think we're just saying at least...
I don't know, I mean, I'm just... I'm just trying to think, do you want a bike or something, you don't want to change it with, does he go along with it?
And so, Michael's proposal is to strike that last sentence, but what I'm also hearing is that with the words to be at least, it, it results in a...
Yeah, it's better than 20, so it's at least 10, and that makes it more accessible later. At 20, you're getting, like, it might be, it might five it hard to make that connection, but at least 10, you can be in range between 10 and 15 or 10 and 20, so, it doesn't hurt you to make that 10.
I might pick 10, yeah.
Yeah. Page 25, item B, the second... Item B, the second paragraph, plus that excess parkland, I would like for that parkland to be as approved by the town. And I would like to clarify, a clarifying statement that the expenditures on park facilities are not parkland equivalent.
We'll go back to the land again.
What was your first point?
The second one, indeed, second one, the excess parkland, and then insert, as approved by the town.
Yeah.
May be applied by a certain part of the town. Second is...
So, the town will agree?
Under, the second one, under park facilities, is determining improvement would take into
Well, I also mentioned that the expenditures for park facilities would not be as parkland equivalent.
Maybe that means that...
And they won't qualify as parkland equivalent. Those expenditures, they're then committed to... Okay. And then, I think Jeff had mentioned in his memo, striking park design, building design, and estate planning, some improvements expenditures. I kind of question this, and I'd like to ask you to think about this. Should we strike permitting and inspection fees as well?
I did think about that one.
Because if we, if the town was permitting...
Right.
Or would we charge ourselves?
Right.
And inspection fees, you know, we could have a memorandum of understanding with the county, not billing inspection fees for public park.
Right.
And not have those lines go somewhere other than improvements on land.
Right. I did think about that particular line out of that, thought that it could be...
And I think, Jeff, here's the opportunity in park facilities to do, to use the nomenclature that we talked about.
Yes.
Because I think, you know, these, these five hundred thousand dollar expenditures for that neighborhood park.
That's right.
I say over a hundred acres.
Yes.
And that B, for the large park, we're talking about the community park, natural resource areas, sportsplex, or the regional park. And on page twenty-six, page twenty-six, also the discussion about the three thousand units. So, give one point of view. I think we had talked about this last time, that on page twenty-seven, formerly item D, it seemed that there was some risk that it could obligate the town to something greater than a six million dollar expenditure, and we're looking for clarity to cap it. I think that was... On page twenty-eight, items F and G, separate those from the park facilities heading, provide their own headings. And for F, I'm suggesting the heading would be bicycle lanes and multi-use paths. And for G, town maintenance facility. Those would be new headings. Oh, and item read, under the bicycle lanes and multi-use paths, there's a sentence that says more specific locations of streets that include bicycle lanes and multi-use paths may be shown on a small area plan, but I would say shall be. Page twenty-nine.
So, if we could linger there for just a moment.
Yeah.
Two things. First, to the maintenance facility, just want to clarify that this maintenance facility will be served to the needs, maintenance needs of the parks themselves. And for, uh, town-owned public facilities, but someone asked me if this would be the public works garage. My understanding is that is not the case. Can anyone help me, excuse me of that, Mr. Esbeck? Is that, is that your understanding as well?
What about public service, Brian?
Uh, that this maintenance facility describes, section G, is not a public works, a public works garage.
I'm not sure whether it is or isn't.
Okay. Well, that it would be sized to serve the maintenance needs for public parks in town, public facilities.
We serve maintenance needs for public parks, not over existing streets and utilities buildings, so it could be, but it doesn't necessarily have to be.
So, when we reach population of sixty thousand, this is the facility that might hold trucks for serving the seven thousand two hundred acres of the P D.
Again, it might or it might not.
We need to clarify that.
Yeah, because my initial reading of it was this was just for maintenance of the parks. I read this as a place where the tractors and lawn mowers were kept for afterglow park.
No, I think it, I think it would be a larger facility than just for the parks, and I think it would be serving other parks and as other towns...
Public facilities, you have to have some type of equipment to mow easements and all that.
And I think it would be up to the town to decide how big it is or how small it is for what needs, and I think that's why Brian's saying it might, might not.
But it's going to come out of park acreage.
And what was your thing? You saw was anywhere from about ten to twenty acres, something that's on the other community.
Yeah, the size of facility that you're contemplating would be, I mean, but that's kind of the point I was trying to make earlier, was that there are some variables here we keep, that we haven't really started to wrap our heads around. I mean, for example, if we were to keep our existing property, would we need, would we need something closer to ten acres rather than twenty acres? So, these are some of the types of things that we really haven't gotten into at this stage.
I think when we use up parkland, parks, snowplows for the whole town.
Yeah.
It should be, it should just be related to, there should be two separate kind of facilities. I would imagine the facility that, of the parks, as you said, maybe that's where they kayak or whatever they need for park lawn mowers and things like that.
As you guys will probably recall from some of the properties we looked at, the bigger facilities, those ten to twenty acre facilities, had all-town operations on them, including parks.
But they weren't, probably weren't using allotted parkland. They're probably going to be allotted a certain number of acres for parks, you hate to use it up on the floor and the snowplow.
I don't know. Maybe they were. I don't know.
I'm just saying, I'm opposed to that. There's, if the parkland, I'd rather see used for parks than not.
I agree.
Unless it's related to maintenance of parks.
Would this element, tell us, you don't have to really...
Yeah, I think that that, I think that it needs to be covered in public facilities where there's, that are from the town, not just a park, needs to be somewhere else. And that's actually, that's the...
Right, right, that's what you're saying, is policy perspective of the town. May as well, just let it decide what to do here.
Mr. Collier, I'm hearing you say that you think that that needs to be addressed elsewhere with sort of language?
Well, we've talked about that in the past, about having, making sure we have acreage for facilities for, for town vehicles and whatnot. But I think, yes, we do need that, but I think it needs to not be parked to public town.
I agree.
Just made it, been, should be counted for, for any park. To make it clear.
Just use, oh, then.
Yeah.
Oh, then, just park maintenance. Oh, park maintenance.
This might not come out as two hundred and sixty-seven acres.
Right. If you clarify it, yeah. I mean, there's something along the way, the maintenance facilities, the whole parkland shouldn't only be for, for the rest of the land to make them.
As a park. And if it were that, it would fit within those six thousand and sixty acres.
He is a small, it's like, that's part of the park, that we need to have that posted on, I would say, but I'm not sure about that question.
I think that's reasonable to expect, but yes, it probably is best addressed by that. So...
We have this up against the town, not in the smaller parks, but we have, as many, you know, mainly, I guess, that's the larger parks, the regional parks. It's in the park, not, not necessarily the little parks.
I think the design of the park, yes, could include those kinds of facilities, parks in good.
It's just for that park.
And then, would, with a period after the word public parks, resolve that? Would that make it clear that it's only for maintenance of the public parks?
Yeah.
And it eliminate the words in town, home, public facility? Is that, is that a start again?
I don't know, you're kind of putting yourself, too, you're binding yourself to a certain amount of usage there.
Yeah, but you don't want to put a huge facility, a garage.
I think that's what they're...
But it could be interpreted that way.
Only by town. If determined by a town.
I'm just thinking, down the road, twenty years from now, when we're not here, this needs to be for, it's a small thing. We need to make sure it's somewhere else, that we do have facilities for the larger needs of this town. This to me, it's like specifically for park maintenance needs. Just that this maintenance facility will be signed to serve the maintenance needs of public parks.
And town-owned development.
I think we should take out the town, I thought you said.
Can you repeat that last part, Mr. Sherwood Farrell, in town-owned public facility?
Sorry?
Is that what it said, town-owned public? Kind of broad. It seems to suggest something more than just parks.
No, certainly, just take out that part.
Right, I think the town's size would...
I mean, if I've got, I started, you know, granted, I may not be here when this comes to, you know, fruition, years and years and years from now, but I would imagine that my successor, if he needs a place to put, or she needs a place to put snowplows, you know, they're not going to look back on this document and say, no, we can't put snowplows.
I do think we should say that, snowplows, that this is going to be counted as a public park. I don't think that people are going to want to bring their kids playing in a warehouse for the snowplows. Parks are supposed to be for public goods. I don't think that a garage with snowplows could count as public park. I just, I think that needs to, yes, we do need to have public facilities for that, but it should not, should not be counted as parkland.
I agree with you there on the parkland, yeah, but, yeah.
Let the kids play on the snowplow.
I don't think it's going to go that extreme, but...
Well, that's a, which would finish the park.
It's not a park. It's not a park. To me, a public parkland is precious. It's something that we want to make sure we use in a way that's public to enjoy. And yes, we do need facilities, but we're not, that should not be counted as park.
I agree.
You just said that. Yeah. That's all I'm trying to say.
Well, we're in agreement. So, that, we could do that by putting a period behind the public parks, period, and strike, and town-owned public facilities, and...
They need it all, if approved by the town.
It's already in, first sentence, and then determined by the town.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Any agreement on that? We've gone to page twenty-nine, payment in lieu. There are four items. A would be, I want to add E. And E would be other factors the town board finds be in the public interest. Other factors the town board finds being in the public interest. And it's your payment in lieu? Sorry? That's another item, your payment in lieu?
What do you think he's out there?
Well, it says the town board should determine whether to accept the offer of payment upon consideration of the following. One of the things I think would be appropriate is anything the town finds to be in the public
But again, that could be, that's, it could be, you're saying it doesn't have to be related to recreation at all, it could just be these things.
Well, I'm trying to not limit this to the four items.
But if there, if it's a payment in lieu, they're not going to do a park, and it needs to be used for something that's related to park.
Okay.
I mean, other factors the town board finds in the public interest that could be... Well, you're just saying the garage for a snowplow. I don't agree with that.
Yeah, but...
I mean, I know plenty of public facilities that are located on public parks, you know, it happens, there are baseball fields, athletic complex.
Yeah, but I'm not in favor of, you know, big twenty, thirty acre garages for parkland.
But I think at the time that that occurs, there will be a board that can identify what the public interest is.
We don't even know if this park looks like...
You think about national parks, you know, if that was put up to a vote, every time you have a new president or whatever, it needs to be sacred. It needs to be sacred, that you don't, to protect parks.
I agree. Well, I think one of the caveats is that you'd have found that it's better to take money than the land. And I would not limit the reason the town has available to it to make that decision.
Just in terms of, I guess, on the trade, I want to make sure that we have parks, we're committed to having parks. And if it comes about money, I am afraid that a future board would choose, oh, we can use this money, it's not a part of the park. And I think, see, we need to make a clue that if we are standing by a certain amount of money for the park, and I don't think that that could be used for something else that's not public, like, is it a park? I'm not setting up very well.
I agree with that, and I think you're saying it perfectly well. I think we want to constrain in future boards and staff in their consideration of what is a valid use of being lieu, or what's a valid reason. And I think that these are, these are fine uses.
Well, and I think Mr. Nesta, Nesta corrected if I'm wrong, but does the statute not require that receipt of a payment in lieu be exp... Well, and I think Mr. Messick, correct me if I'm wrong, but does the statute not require that receipt of a payment in lieu be expanded upon park related uses?
Yes, in the general vicinity of the development.
I mean, maybe the wording to other factors is too broad, in my opinion. I'm open to other possibilities, but I think I might see you saying things that really is so widely...
Anything deemed to be in the public good related to public parks. I think the statute limits you to that.
Yeah, well, let's, let's echo the statute. It's harmonious, it's an army here, state statute.
Statute would trump the element. And I thought Mr. Jones didn't want to restrict you all. The law may change.
Well, do you agree that it's, that they're just leaving it to the public interest? It's a bit vague.
Sure.
Well, I believe it's the town board's finding of which is the public interest, which I think the citizens decide every couple of years as to whether or not you're acting in the public interest.
I think we're required to do the public interest as we operate here.
I, I made it broad because I don't know what considerations might come up that you might want to consider that would fit that category of the board's finding of the public interest.
Well, I do get that, sure.
What about a comment for public interest that says, "And is", could we feed it back into the statute?
As by law provided.
As by law.
Covers everything.
I want to comment. As, as the law provides, or... Other factors the town board found are public, as the law provides. Why, I just don't see why you need to add that. This is pretty broad, you got, plus recreation, green light, open space, apopatia, the exit, I mean, that's pretty wide, and why?
So, Commissioner Foley, one thing that has been suggested to me that, you know, while on streams, might actually apply in such a scenario. There's a, many of people who are looking at doing an educational facility called the Energy Discovery Center. And they envision something for school educates to come in, be very dynamically programmed. It would be a museum, but without a static set of displays and exhibits. It would be a penetration, very highly engaged educational center. And the suggestion was, what better place to put that than in a park? And again, this is, this is completely hypothetical, because they're in the very early stage of this project. I could see that relating to parkland, you know, because if the, if the mission education of the facility tied into that park, that's conceivable. So, I think if we constrain it based on the statute, I'm a little bit concerned about Mr. Messick's throwaway that about how the law can change. You still uncomfortable with it?
Yeah. Still not recreation, will be enough.
Well, I don't think all recreation is our coolest.
Yeah, so if you consider that recreation, then, then you wouldn't need to say other factors, town board finding, that would get a recreation, that would be the one you need.
This language is intended to, to allow you to accept a check. And these are the factors that you're supposed to consider to accept the check.
I understand that, and I think if that's related to parks, it, the payment in motion could be used for park and recreation, that's all.
Well, you are restricted by law to do that.
Okay.
These factors don't have anything to do with what you do with the fee in lieu of, after you receive it. These are the considerations that you're going to make whether to take the land as being offered for dedication or the check.
I understand. So I just, don't really, don't necessary to add E, and I think that's not clear, I just don't think it's necessary. I'm not a big fan of payment in lieu in the first place, but I think if there is payment in lieu, it should be park related, that's all.
Well, I'm concerned also, and I think it shares with your concerns, that payment in lieu may diminish the number of acres, and, and I'm worried about the number of acres already. So I guess even with that suggested, then I would support that, I to E.
I don't have any problem with it, because it specifically says it's up to the town board, and as law provides.
It depends on what the values of that board are, it could be people who don't care about parks, and, and parks will, that park will be lost for eternity, you know.
The board?
The board. No, no, probably be doing it for its change.
Well, would it be better to more specifically say, instead of as the law provides? Because since the law can change, but you better say, "And the proceeds used for" park and recreational purposes?
No, you said, "And", and that's, I'm just saying, not even...
So you're saying, in general, not that you...
Page thirty. Talks about, makes reference to the statute and what the law requires. And I think it's just appropriate to strike what the law requires, because the law is present, whether you cite it or not. And it talks about putting the, that the town will put funds in a certain location and do certain things, being prescribed by Chad Park, and I think the town should reserve for its self decisions on how it spends its money.
Right. Isn't that the same thing we're talking about?
Well, it, it's very close.
The first sentence is that quotes the law, that's the law.
Right.
Today, you don't have any choice, that's what you got to do. It's what you do now with fees and lieu of.
That's a real, real, that's better anyway.
The last paragraph.
Can you talk about any more?
No, I'm striking the whole thing.
The whole paragraph?
It's a sentence, we can't, you have to do that. Just putting, or it states... Is it, don't get that way of doing it.
Does the board approve of the striking of that past paragraph in chapter?
Since it is already required by law?
I like it either, but I, it's, um...
I don't think it's...
...town will find that.
I don't think we need to remove it.
So one of the advantages that that paragraph has is it does fill out the rationale and feelings of that we feel it's better than anything that we do.
You agree.
Anything we have to do.
I'd like to pick to this place if you want to add to it, if you can. As you wanted to do.
I don't think that's likely to provide that concept. Tell you, funding that way then. Maybe it would be up to you, or the town may have to strike.
Is that you?
I don't know.
Do you, Ray?
I think there's been talk about hiring consultants, I don't know if that's been decided among the board. Clearly, all the changes that you agreed tonight need to be incorporated into a new draft. Consultant issue is still outstanding in this statement, would like to have a structure on that.
I have one question, and I may have missed over it so much, it went right by me and through me. I'm still not understanding what our analysis is. I mean, what are we asking an analysis of? That would help me get through before I, I don't figure an analysis on this, I'm just, I'm not really sure.
Sure, thank you.
Of course, we're analyzing.
I appreciate that, Commissioner Farrell. So I think at core, I'm, I'm seeing a question of, on the one hand, we have currently the, the opportunity to consider an impact fee in the future as one of a number of different ways to gain revenue, to make improvements to parks, and fund their continued operation and maintenance. So the impact fee on one hand, and on the other hand, the rather complicated language in the additional element, which eliminates that option, but quantifies, I don't know, it looks to me like nine and a half million worth of contributions. And Commissioner Fioco has put forward his understanding of the numbers. I, I think some of those things I would not have included. I think we've got the outstanding question of, in what way is the land valuation to be considered? My understanding is that because of the master plan, Chad Park master plan and PD, the 667 acres, that is a, that is the quantification of that land. That any valuation we put on it would be a secondary consideration, not related to, to these questions. So, I need help with someone with greater municipal finance experience than myself, to simplify what is a very complicated proposal. And I don't know any other way to explain it than that. I'd like to see a table with two legs, or two, just, table with two columns, and that's it. A and B. So, here's what it'd be with the additional element, here's what it'd be if you, if you didn't give up the impact fee. Maybe I've oversimplified it, I'm sure I did oversimplify it. I mean, there's, there's questions about present dollar, present use value of dollars. That gets into really sophisticated finance, where a dollar today is not worth the same thing as a dollar in the future, or vice versa. We also have to consider that if, if town were obliged to purchase parkland, then in future, that land is going to be more expensive, more valuable, probably. If we can reasonably soon, uh... There's just a lot of financial questions that I don't think, I don't think we have what we need to know to approve this additional element language on a financial basis, on a fiscal responsibility basis. So, that's my opinion.
Tom, do you accept the value presented in the memo regarding the impact fee? Again, I think that staff put that forward, this is just, act of the envelope, this is what they could pull together very quickly. I have no expertise on impact fees, or how they're levied, or what their limits or constraints are, so I find that remarkable, that you would think that staff is just throwing numbers at us so that we can make important decisions without qualified input.
I, I don't think I would ever say that they're throwing numbers at us, but I think that the, the document that we're given, with, I think it was 48 hours notice? To turn around? He said, in the workshop, he said he didn't feel very strongly about that number. But he said he felt that the contrast, the comparison was important. And the memo has a scale depicted.
Right, and that scale says you consider land value improvements, and a third item on this end, and the same ingredients on this end. Existing parks and future parks. It included the same equation, and then we had an equation of four million dollars of value. Four thousand five hundred eighty residents, equalling eight hundred thirty six dollars per person. You multiply that by sixty thousand people as an estimate for Chad Park, and you end up with a value of fifty some odd million dollars. And then you back off that and use the population statistics that Chad Park has provided, and you end up with something far less, because they project about forty eight thousand people, and you get forty two million dollars. And you compare that against building them, and the improvements are being offered, and you've got an equation of somewhere between a hundred and forty some odd million dollars versus fifty or forty. And I think that's the, well, that's the analysis based on the public information provided to us by our staff and by Chad and Park.
I think, I think the value of the land is considered after the 667 acres are, are granted.
That's my understanding. Well, that's four million dollars worth of land improvements that we presently have and are in the torque.
Well, the question is before the board, I guess, is anyone else hungry for a financial analysis that will, of, of a different description?
Well, I see it's incumbent upon us to be able to guarantee the maintenance of the gift, if you want to call it that, or the accommodation of the parkland set aside by Chad Park. So, I mean, I think it's important that we know how it is going to be kept up and maintained, because the last thing the law we want is to take the 667 acres and allow them to degrade, because we don't have proper maintenance or proper facilities, replication or whatever it is, you know. Things have to change, and we make no doubt, it parks. So it's not always the very same thing. You know, tables have to be nice, it's what he said. Oh, it's, um, I do think it's important to understand the concept of what's going to take, carry this, carry this, this beautiful, you know, 667 acres home.
And we wouldn't want to just sit on that acreage and not develop and, and enhance it.
Can I get Paul's cover?
Paul, do you have any idea how long it would take to secure a firm and to get a report?
Well, I think there's, as you've discussed, I think there's so many parameters that we need to define. I think the cursory inquiries I think to these firms are really for boilerplate. Here's what we can do for you. Here's what we've done for our communities. I don't think you're going to be able to hand this over to a firm and say, "Make all these decisions." I think those are your decisions. And no matter who you bring in to help you with this, you're still going to be, and this is essentially what Jeff said earlier, you're still going to be facing these issues. So I don't, you know, I think it'll take several weeks at least for any firm to start wrapping their head around things to provide boilerplate of, "Here's what we typically do for our communities. Here are the services that we offer." The two firms that I've contacted specialize in impact fees. But again, it's, you know, you're dealing with some big issues and different definitions of terms. So it would, you know, it's going to take some time for them to work through the things to, they just, and I think as Fiocco says, you're going to have to define that scope of what you're really looking for and what you're really asking for. And you, I think, need to go figure out what that is when they provide a general idea of what type of things they do.
Can we, Paul, is there something that you feel would be useful to pitch on the spot there?
That's entirely up to you. The staff's provided you with information in prior memos and prior meetings. So that's a decision that's up to you.
So those figures that you provided in the memo, do you feel as though they're accurate?
I think that basic ratio is kind of the standard procedure for developing impact fees.
Right. But the values that you provided for the existing parks and facilities?
I think we probably have to use 4 million roughly. I think that's about right.
Yeah. So divided by population, I think, provided per capita expenditure.
Yeah. And that's course for the level of money.
And those dollars would be used for development and maintenance issues?
I think it could be structured in a lot of different ways and I don't pretend to be an impact fee specialist.
I'm refreshing my memory. The population number that we provided, that did not include the population of Chad Park?
On one side of the equation, there's town park capital and population. And then there's population of Chad Park and an X for these. funding portion of what these capital investments come from associated with it.
So the existing value divided that by population, got a per capita number, multiplied that by, and estimate the population of Chad Park to get the impact fee value. And that's what I said was somewhere between 52 and 43 million dollars. Yeah, so you have that before. And compare that against the commitments and the additional element that Chad Park is making, that is upwards of $140-some-odd million for Chad Park's commitments to the qualified parkland. Did not include the non-qualified parkland, which was the private recreational facilities that are provided typically towards the parkland projects, age restricted projects. It did not include Y M C A, which they indicated is going to be provided, but we're not even counting that when we're comparing against the impact fee value. And it does not include those public realm items that I had mentioned in the analysis, which was another substantial value that we can call a transportation. But I know our Parks and Rec Master Plan is talking about public land. We need these facilities for helping communities and they're being provided by Chad Park. So based on that analysis, it seems to me the additional elements are of greater value than the impact fee. And therefore, their request to not be subject to an impact fee if they make these investments. I mean, the P E D is the ability for us to have this flexibility to design different systems in order to get the project that we want. And I think the additional elements means, not to mention all the land dedication for schools and fire stations and police stations as a package. This is, I think, a very appealing package. Granted, I think this is language correct, but I think the value stays unclear. It was reflected in the analysis. I think it's what we're comparing against is the value of the impact. What's your total park acreage, Mr. Moore?
Around 100.
I think a lot of it is how we, this would be covered, but, you know, 20 years from now, we just find it. It seems to me now, not to worry, but certainly to cover. We want to, because we want to be more concerning the whole purpose of, you know? How do we hold that?
I think the impact fee would be based on development. So new development. You can always collect very revenue through other means, through taxation and or living bonds, which is often a way that parks get developed that the community, not only your local community, but people from all around the world that invest in your community by buying these bonds. So I don't think the impact fee is a reliable source. Honestly, I think you just need to look for an accountant to see that. So if we have roughly 100 acres of parks and they're valued approximately $4 million, $40,000 per park versus the value you've assigned, Commissioner Fiocco, $150,000 per acre.
They don't have improvements.
Okay. Post improvement. That's what you're saying?
Much of your 100 acres does not have water and sewer serving and that's what affects the value of higher.
Okay. Fair enough. Yeah. But again, it's a radical notion in my mind that we're going to put a dollar value on those acres that the P E D says are to be given over to town. I understand that there's real-world implications for this. I understand that there's real value to those lands. But I don't think it enters this equation and I don't think that we should give up the impact fee. I think it unnecessarily constrains us in our ability to ensure maintenance of the parks without harming or impacting the rest of the taxpayers in town.
Well, I think we're not going to vote on this one. I personally would like to work on that some day if it comes up. You know, we can learn more about impact fees and what happens all the time. I'm not sure what that's what I feel about, but.
I'm just not sure putting more burden on our taxpayers with impact fee. With this, if you guys remember, oh gosh, six months ago when Think Chuck sent a, I call it chicken scratch, but it writes better than I do, but of all the parks and the monies that were spent in Chad Park was well over this impact fee of 52 million. It was, if I'm not mistaken, it was in, was on 155 somewhere in that neighborhood? Yeah, I was very impressed with the expenditures for the parkland then.
But I think that that was also confusing some of these categories.
Now, where are you going with that, Tom?
Well, I think there were things lumped in with those calculations that don't need to be in the equations. You know, streets and sidewalks and I don't have those numbers in front of me, but.
That's the analysis I provided, broken down into different categories.
I appreciate that.
The commitments and the non-commitments and then those that are commitments but don't fit in the category of recreation.
Yeah. And Commissioner Fiocco, I think some of that language is very helpful and I would welcome seeing, I don't know, perhaps we could consider having public realm improvements as language in this additional element so that it makes it very clear what is promised, you know, as an obligation to the master plan and what is promised in terms of excellence, in pursuit of excellence or exceptionality.
I think the element does that under the heading park facilities. And the changes we agreed to this evening, that included these subheadings of bicycle lanes, multi-use paths and now maintenance facility. Holds those public realm items out of the qualifying.
Good, thank you.
And for the statistics.
All right.
I have a good question for Steve here then. Can we, will it be difficult to incorporate these changes in a new draft within a time period?
You might want to ask that. I don't think so, but you might want to ask Chad Park that question.
Well, I think we're talking about adding our language now and so I ask Chad Park to.
Well, surely, but they have to agree to it. They're the drafters of the elements, so they have to. All the changes that you agreed to, they have to do it. And we have to just verify that they did it.
I think you've got some other thinking to do.
Right. The qualifiers. I think we all want to sort of, right, right.
3,000 units.
I think the applicant hearing, the 3,000 sounds a little high and we might want to cut it to the drawing board and come up with another qualifier.
I thought it seemed 1500.
Maybe it.
Is that in one of these drafts?
That version. We can go back through that and take a look at it. So that's what I'm hearing is that that's the only sort of, outside of changes we've made, that's left handed that we all sort of need to think about and we can get to have. You're Chad Park protesting, so I'm sure they would be willing to make those changes.
Charles, one question up. Can we proceed with the fire and police and public water and have approval of that and get that out of the way?
I've thought about that and I think if the applicant were amenable to that, we could certainly do that. Could open the element back up whenever we get to the parks section. For them to have to amend the element, but that's something. I think if they could make it happen, certainly their counsel could play.
We're not interested in that.
Okay. Okay. Well, we'll take direction and move forward with the new draft.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chair.
And that concludes our agenda except for Commissioner's concerns. As we last. Commissioner Farrell?
I don't believe I've had anything before me. And Captain Robinson, I just see you guys live on the street today. I had several people on the street today.
Pass it on to you, Page Two.
Thank you.
In from Chief, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, good. Let me just mention a pesty little tree we have downtown. Not one of us walk away with all the other trees. Stay lit and go off. Refuses to get in line.
It seems a lot quiet, but.
So there was one and.
Yeah, we'll find out. And I think it's just the General Sasek you mentioned here, Main Street brethren who participate for Sunday. Much. Thank you.
That will be that.
Thank you.
I'll give anything other than to commend I, from Chief, for all the work that he's done. Really do appreciate, appreciate all of those out there on door-to-door to our purchases. I really do appreciate it. And in character, this is my.
Mr. Gruceback. That's all.
Mr. Gruceback, I appreciate you sending my gratitude to the utility side or if it was yourself who may have played any role in expediting the sinkhole repairs on private property, but affecting people upstream on that drainage line. It was really nice to see that get done so quickly. And I emailed you and you responded. I appreciate that on the erosion we see at Thompson, corner of Thompson and Small. And looking forward to hearing more about the very large culvert repair at Pittsburgh Elementary School Road. Thank you for your prompt attention to those things.
And I'll add your thanks, Paul.
Appreciate it.
Do we have the ready to concrete open now?
Mr. Gruceback, is it up to us to do a curb cut next to the handicapped space there right in front of the law firm on Hillsborough Street, right near Page Burning Park? In other words, we have a handicapped marked spot that we have no curb cut?
Yeah, I think we can take a look and do that. Let me just double check if some of the physical needs are required. Absolutely, we'll have it done next week or anything.
No. I had several suggestions from people about things when I spoke at Rotary. And that was, they were advocating for a lower water deposit for small businesses opposed to large businesses. And I don't know how one would make that criteria, but they were saying that if they.
It's on the law.
It's thinking that they felt like a $500 water deposit that you don't get back until you are completely through with the business was a real burden to small business owners. And they felt that either the water deposit. they felt that either the water deposit should be refunded earlier in the process, like after two years or something of on-time payment.
Like every so often, we have suggestions from the board to give consideration to older adults, lower-income adults, and it's, the state doesn't totally allow you that kind of attitude. I mean, you can get into some issues of volume and usage and things like that, but that's more on the usage side, as far as the peace side, I'm not so sure. And any other thing that I want to caution the board against, and especially if we get into the issue of, you know, the deposit that you had talked about maybe at the last meeting, is that, you know, we have people talking to us about unregulated chemicals and things of that nature that we may or may not want to treat for at some point in time, that's going to require revenue in order to accomplish. If we're looking at continually forgiving these revenue streams, I don't know how we fulfill those goals either. So, I mean, it's all stuff, stuff to consider and talk about and think about, if there's a way to, I mean, I'll, I'll go in and try to find a way maybe to make some of those things a little bit more applicable on the peace side, but yeah, it's going to be an uphill climb, I'm sure.
Everything that it suggests of work, and, and a lot of people have talked about how one thought it was maybe in peace are in the northwest quadrant, are, is there a chance, there could be benches put along there to prevent children and, and dogs and cats from falling into a B and C, or could there be metal pieces put up so that it's some, some sort of rail?
Which is the exact issue, I mean, what is the issue with that, the unsilviness or the danger?
Both, the safety, this is...
People are really concerned about falling in those things.
That's, that's what someone did previously, that they were concerned about the safety and that it's just a lawsuit waiting to happen. I mean, those were two concerns that I wanted to address. If we're done, is there a motion?
Well, actually, I remembered one other item, just because I want to apologize for what apparently was this one last part during the parks workshop, asking Mr. Warren to look into that, it was just a natural impulse in the moment, so, anyway, there was another one that did take place here in the public, and it was good, and we had about the idea of a chart, a line chart, that might help us understand exactly how the 80/90 rule is going to impact our remaining allocable wastewater treatment capacities. And I recall, but have not had time to go back and dig up, there's been prior engineering work that had given us, given us a similar line, that I think that we could elaborate, and Mr. Gruzbeck, I'll ask, is this something the staff have worked on?
Oh, yeah, I think, yeah, I think it's very... Thank you.
If there's no further discussion, is there a motion to adjourn?
So, move.
Moved by Jay Carroll, so if you have my confusion, so if you can say no, I...